Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearing Hearings. I'm Bobby Wilson, I represent District One, and we are joined by two council members, three. We're joined by Councilperson Strausberger, Councilperson Warwick, and Councilman Danny Lovell. All right, and then as members join, I'll recognize their presence when they join.
Yeah.
Thanks, Peter. So for this hearing, we'll be hearing updates from the Pittsburgh Land Bank, and I'd like to invite the representatives from the Land Bank up. So please have a LA1?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I have my backup team here.
Okay. Well, Sally, while you're getting settled, we're going to have Peter go over his update that he has.
Thank you, Councilman. The mission of the Pittsburgh Land Bank is to return unproductive real property to beneficial reuse through an equitable, transparent, and public process. Revitalize neighborhoods to strengthen the city's tax base and support socially and economically diverse communities. The Pittsburgh Land Bank is governed by a nine-member Board of Directors, three of whom are appointed by City Council representing the district with the most distressed and vacant parcels. Reverend Ricky Burgess is on the board, Councilman Lovell is the board treasurer, and Councilman Wilson is also a member of the Land Bank Board. In the budget, there is $3.5 million in ARPA funds remaining to be allocated to the Land Bank. According to the minutes of the Land Bank's October 13, 2023 meeting, the Board authorized the Pittsburgh Land Bank to enter into an agreement with the URA for receipt of American Rescue Plan Act funds based on the Pittsburgh Land Bank's proposed uses of funds and programs.
Thank you, Budget Director McDevitt. And Sally, if you could introduce yourself, and feel free to present anything, say anything before members have questions.
Sure. Good morning. I am Sally Stedelman, the manager of the Pittsburgh Land Bank. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, so I think I will...
Get that all set up?
Here we go. Let's see if it's going to cooperate here. There we are. All right, ready to start?
Take it away.
All right. Well, this is the Pittsburgh Land Bank's inaugural capital budget hearing, so we're so thrilled to have this time to talk through our 2023 accomplishments and our future plans. So I always like to start with mentioning that vacant and abandoned property is not a unique problem to Pittsburgh. Thanks to the state legislation passed in 2012, there are now over 25 landbanks across the state of Pennsylvania. It's also a tool used nationally to address vacant and abandoned property. Right? So Pete gave a great overview of our mission and vision, and a really special aspect of why landbanks are needed is often vacant and abandoned property becomes inaccessible to the public because of high back taxes, other kinds of liens, and poor conditions of properties, where the only entity that is able to step in and bring that property back to productive reuse is the municipality. And landbanks are given special powers to be most effective at being able to recycle that property. So our landbank is unique. We have a special role here in our existing land recycling systems here at the city of Pittsburgh. So we have the existing city's inventory and the Urban Redevelopment Authority, and our landbank is designed to work alongside of those entities and offer a different third path for appropriate-sized projects. We like to call it the Goldilocks fit for these in-between projects that where we have additional oversight over end-users, but streamline processes. So when you think of small-scale affordable housing projects that are publicly funded, we want to make sure that there are as little barriers as possible to making that land available. The landbank could be a good fit. But we also have that additional oversight for selling perhaps a single-family home, making sure that we're selling to someone that does have the capacity to rehab that home once it comes into their possession. And I also like to point out that our Pittsburgh Land Bank, we have a lot of time and thoughtful attention has been paid in crafting many guiding documents to how we operate. So these are all available on our website, and they lay out not only our mission and vision, but what we... property that we look to sell, and how we interact with our partners, with the city and the Urban Redevelopment Authority. So I'd like to give an overview of what we've been up to here in 2023. So I think first and foremost, what has been most exciting is that the landbank has completed five sales so far in 2023. These are the first five sales our Pittsburgh Land Bank has closed on, ever. And we started in May with the sale of Six Boggs Avenue, which is a property that sat vacant for over 10 years in the public inventory. So this property is going to the Mount Washington CDC and will be the future home of the Equum Medical Food Bank, and there will be an affordable housing unit upstairs. And this was a competitive sales process. So we... Actually, this was our second round listing this property for sale, and we took applications. And this was the end-user that our board ultimately selected as the highest and best use. Some other exciting sales. We had the very first property that had ever come into the landbank's inventory, which is 243 Meadow, located in our neighborhood of Lorimer. That property also... This was a second round sale, and we were able to do a direct sale to the Urban Academy of Pittsburgh, which serves schools serving young people in the Lorimer neighborhood. And this will serve as a campus expansion. So for now, it's great green space for the children of that school to use, great for after-school activities, and is there for, you know, future campus expansion. And finally, I think the project that I think highlights what a great, effective tool this landbank can be is the three parcels that we sold to Hazelwood Initiative. So Hazelwood Initiative was fully funded, is fully funded, to break ground on three new construction affordable housing units. They'll be sold at 80% AMI. The funding was in place, and we were able to remove barriers and quickly and effectively sell this property to Hazelwood Initiative so they can move forward with their project. So in addition to our sales, some other highlights from 2023. So some of those documents I mentioned earlier, we were able to utilize and implement. We passed the tri-party cooperation agreement over the summer. An amendment to that agreement that solidified our process by which the landbank requests and receives property from the city. Yeah, so we're happy to have that, and just got to utilize that process for the first time this past week with 23 parcels that were approved by this body just this last Wednesday. Something that we've been working hard at as well is we have an existing donation agreement with the city, and the landbank has helped to cover the cost to quiet the title on almost 60 properties in the city's inventory in order to clear out the remaining property reserve. So many of those have been sold out to the community development corporations that have requested them. I think we've got seven left in that group, so we're really excited to be a partner there. We've been working closely with the Vacant Property Working Group, managed by PCRG. We also filed and completed our first quiet title action, which is a really major piece of what the landbank does, is effectively quiet title. We implemented an objection process. One of our properties, we had a petition submitted, and it met our minimum requirements, and so we went through a community engagement process, and we were able to test out that process, and overall, I think it went really well. We overall got a lot of community support for that sale, and the board did vote in the affirmative. We updated our landcare contract with the Urban Redevelopment Authority. So a really important piece of what makes this landbank effective is our affiliate status with the Urban Redevelopment Authority, that although we're staff of two and a half, we're embedded in this large organization that has a lot of expertise and support. And updating our landcare contract, I think, is an excellent example. I sit right next to the property manager at the URA, and there was a whole team of folks that went through this process of reviewing and entering into contracts with our landcare providers, and so we were able to participate in that. And really, there's a lot of oversight and support that's going to be crucial in making sure that the parcels entering into the landbank inventory are well-maintained. And finally, we brought a law firm under contract this year, three law firms actually, to complete quiet title services. They've got a lot of capacity to do so, and they have a lot of experience quieting title. Also work for the Tri-Cog Land Bank and the Philadelphia Land Bank, so we're really glad to have them on the team, and really will be able to significantly increase the number of titles that can be quieted. Another important project, so the property reserve, as it had existed, was sunsetted in 2020 per the tri-party cooperation agreement. That was transitioned into management by the Pittsburgh Land Bank. And so this year, we were able to overhaul that program a bit. We changed the lead time of, you know, a couple of weeks to a couple of months, so our community development corporations had a lot more time to look over available tax delinquent property to place into the sale. But we also provided them with a lot more data and a map to show where vacant and abandoned property was in their communities, and we overlapped that with the dead-end property dataset from PLI, as well as the post office vacant and abandoned property data condemnation scores, so CDCs could really make smarter decisions around what they were requesting to put through the treasure sale. So we are really looking forward for those properties to come into the inventory and to begin to request them. So some quick highlights from what is currently in our property pipeline in addition to those five sales. This is our pipeline across the city. A couple of highlights here. So we are eminently... Good morning. We are days away from closing on a parcel that will be sold to the City of Bridges Community Land Trust. The URA has already sold several parcels for this project to the City of Bridges. So we were able to come in and really shorten and simplify the sales process so that City of Bridges can continue their work. Again, just, you know, an excellent example of this is a complex, publicly-funded project. There's lots of oversight, and so being able to just streamline the movement of the property to get it into the hands of that end-user is really critical. Next, we have the completion of the Lidle Street Playground in Hazelwood. So this playground is existing. There's just a small stretch of land right next to the playground that Hazelwood Initiative wanted to bring together. You know, a no-brainer. There is nothing else that could happen with this property other than remain a piece of this park, so we were pleased to offer this simplified process to be able to sell this piece of land directly to Hazelwood Initiative to complete the playground. And then my final two projects that we're also just so excited about are transferring two urban farms to the Allegheny Land Trust. So first, we have Heelcrest Urban Farm in Garfield, a longstanding urban farm that was a hodgepodge of different parcels. So Allegheny Land Trust owns some, but some are owned by the city, some are owned by the URA. And so the landbank, we're coming in to acquire the remaining public parcels and transfer those through our simplified process to the Allegheny Land Trust so that urban farm can be protected by the landtrust and also stewarded. And, you know, that nonprofit then has the ability to go out and raise additional funds and support the activities on that farm. And Ballfield Farm is the same, located in the neighborhood of Perry Hilltop, longstanding urban farm, and was located on a city-owned ballfield that is now, after many years, is finally making its way to the landtrust. And then I wanted to highlight a few projects coming out of the city's inventory to the landbank. So a really important partner, especially in these early days for the Pittsburgh Land Bank, is the Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation. They are a fellow affiliate of the Urban Redevelopment Authority, and they specialize in the rehab of single-family homes that they sell to 80% AMI buyers. So I wanted to share a couple of pictures of some of the homes that have just recently been approved to come out of the city's inventory to Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation. I believe these have been in the city's inventory since 2018 and 19. So we're excited to participate in helping to stabilize those homes. Some other projects coming out of the city's pipeline. We have the completion of a site assembly on West North Avenue, which is the former Light of Life building that will be purchased by Rising Tide Partners in partnership with Trec and Buell to be preserved for future affordable housing. I know I got to work on this project a bit in a prior role, and I am just so excited to see that it's going to a responsible owner that is going to preserve... I mean, what an excellent location for additional affordable units. I have the expansion of the Brashear Association's campus. So they're located in the neighborhood of Knoxville. They provide critical social services for residents of the hilltop, and so they're looking to purchase two currently vacant parcels around their offices so that they can expand outdoor services and have a place for the residents that they serve to spend time. I believe that there's going to be a playground as well. And finally, the old Allegheny Community Garden, as well as the Kincaid Community Garden in Garfield. We will be able to complete direct sales to the Allegheny Land Trust to protect those gardens that otherwise could be at risk of, you know, going to a different buyer if they were to simply go through the city's open sales process where a bid, an auction, is required. But we're able to offer kind of a more appropriate-sized sales process than what it would take for something as simple as a community garden to move through the URA's disposition process. And just a quick snapshot of some of our projected 2024 pipeline and where those are located across the city. I have a couple of slides here. I'll try and be pretty brief, just going over our sales requirements. So we do have, you know, again, getting to that, this third path that we still... There's still oversight, and we still require our buyers to demonstrate that they have the capacity to rehab the structure they may be purchasing or complete whatever work it is that they're proposing to do, and that they have to demonstrate that they are funded or have projected funding sources that are appropriate to cover that work. But kind of a different approach here. So the idea with the landbank is that we can complete the sale, but there's still oversight to make sure the work can be completed. So deed and escrow is a really popular program. You hear a lot about it out of Cuyahoga County is one option, which really works best if someone is self-funded. But perhaps, you know, a resident coming to purchase a home with a mortgage rehab product, we would use a renovation enforcement mortgage or a reverter deed and escrow, just to make sure that if something were to happen, if that project is not completed, or if something very different than what a person listed on their application occurs at the property, there is a way for the landbank to bring that property back into our inventory. So I'd like to move into talking about our future budget requests and operational support. Oh, looks like my slide's got a little mixed up here. Sorry. This final one is our review of protected categories for protected sales. So we have seven categories here that if an applicant meets one of these, the landbank is able to sell directly to that applicant rather than listing it for sale, like we did with Six Boggs. So we hope to have a mix of both types of sales moving forward. So moving into our... Talking about our budget and future budget needs. So we're so excited that we have been able to activate this landbank and get started, but we still have... Oh, I wonder what happened to my... But to give you an idea of what this challenge still looks like in the city of Pittsburgh... So this report is from 2018. It estimates that the direct annual cost of vacant and abandoned property to the city is around $2 million. That does not include our $4 million demolition budget, and that there's an annual loss, annual number of properties that are tax delinquent at around $2.3 million. But the... Really, the bigger, more staggering number is the loss of property value, how those vacant and abandoned properties affect properties around them, and that we lose around $266 million in property value annually. So that means folks don't have equity in their homes. They don't have an ability to get a line of credit to fix their roof or, you know, make other important purchases in their life. And then there's the loss in tax revenue from that loss of property value is around $4.8 million. The estimate of the total number of vacant properties is around 23,000. But I do have a... Kind of drilled into those stats a little bit more. So we... There's an estimated number of about 297 condemned properties' structures in the city's inventory. 65 of those are actively on the demolition list. There are 222 properties that are actively on the demolition list as we speak. So that's our, you know, our first universe of properties we're thinking about at the Pittsburgh Land Bank, is what's currently in the inventory. And then the second universe is what is still privately-owned vacant tax-delinquent property. So currently, the number of parcels in the city that are currently eligible for a tax sale, so there are three years tax-delinquent or more, is a little over 9,500. Of those 9,500, about 5,000 are structures. And so... But more importantly, the estimated number of vacant tax-delinquent structures is around 977. The data available to identify that vacant property is far from perfect, but probably, you know, hovers around 1,000 vacant tax-delinquent structures, property that does not have someone living in it. Another really important dataset here is PLI's dead-end property list. So that's property that PLI has cited multiple times, taken to court multiple times, and no one is responding. They're usually doing a little more research to confirm that the property owner is deceased, and then it gets marked a dead-end property, and that is the end of the road for that And then of those, we've also got about 938 that are condemned and 160 that have all those criteria. And I bring these numbers up because they're big, but they're not that big. This is a problem that could be tackled with a couple of years of concentrated effort. And then at the bottom here, I've got... I just wanted to highlight, we've torn down about 525 structures since 2019, and that's cost the city around $15 million.
Sally Stedelman, would you mind if we pause in your presentation? Because Councilwoman Warwick is online and has to leave the meeting shortly. Would it be okay if members, if we just let one round of questions? I think it might be a good time to kind of pause.
Sure.
So, Councilwoman Warwick, are you still there?
Yes, I am. Hi. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. And I apologize, Sally, for not being in chambers for the hearing.
No worries.
Yeah. You've done a lot of great work over the years. So can I... I guess I just have a quick clarification question on the numbers. So at the beginning, you said since May, you'd made five sales, and then later you said, I think that most of the titles were cleared from the property reserve, and that there were 60 sales made from that?
Yes.
So is that a total of 65 sales?
Yes. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Warwick. Yeah, I apologize. The 60 sales, so the landbank is assisting with the quiet title, but they are being sold directly out of the city's inventory. So we're working with the real estate team, and we're helping to communicate with the CDCs, but ultimately, the sales are directly out of the city's inventory.
I'm tracking. Okay, okay, thanks. Yeah, I guess my only question, as I know we've talked about this before, is just, you know, I'm interested... Eventually, I understand you've had a lot, you're sort of getting up and running a bit, right, this year, so, you know, and you have a small team. But eventually, a program, you know, getting a program in place that allows, you know, in addition to the CDCs, being, you know, being able to buy homes, sort of facilitating residents who might want to, you know, who meet certain criteria and who are interested in, you know, buying a property and, you know, either just for themselves or to flip or something like that to sort of build, you know, generational wealth for themselves and within their community. So that's really my only question.
Is the question, can we implement the programming?
Right. Well, sort of what you're thinking about, or if you are looking into some type of program around that.
Yes, yes, yes. And I know, as you know, this is one of my favorite questions, and I think a big reason why I was excited to come to the Pittsburgh Land Bank is this idea of making this vacant and abandoned property accessible to the average resident and to build programming that makes it as easy as possible, which I don't think anybody ever says the word "easy" in the same sentence as "real estate transaction," but as easy as it can be, as streamlined as it can be for residents to have the opportunity to apply to purchase a property, a vacant and abandoned publicly-owned property, and to use a tool like a mortgage rehab product or a loan product to purchase that home rather than, you know, currently, when you... To buy out of the city's inventory, it is a cash transaction. So yeah, we're hoping to pilot that program in the coming year. I think we're currently looking at the inventory and our pipeline to see what might make the most sense and which communities are most interested to partner. But yeah, the idea would be that we would be able to list the property. I'm hoping that we'll be able to list, maybe even... We may have a broker at the URA who kind of lists it like a real estate agent. You might see this property on Zillow, and we'll take applications. We'll use a scorecard to determine who meets our criteria, right? So income may play a role as well. And we're going to prioritize owner occupants. I know the Westmoreland County Land Bank, when they make sales, they put a five-year deed restriction on the property, that you cannot sell the property for five years after the sale. And so we've got tools available like that to make sure that if someone is purchasing something and rehabbing the property, then there's going to be a delay from that new purchase price hitting the market, which I think will play a really important role here as well. But that there will be some requirements, though, to make sure that our applicants are... Do have the wherewithal to complete the renovation. I think a big part of that, too, is giving applicants access, ease of access to the structure itself to get in there. I think if you're going through a process of using a mortgage rehab product, you know, you might have to access the property three or four times between the initial offer and the closing. And so it's just small things like that, and building programming around that to make it easy and accessible for a resident to purchase a property. Does that... I know we can talk about this all day long, so...
Yeah, no, that sounds great. That sounds great. That's sort of exactly what I'm interested in. So yeah, so thanks for that. And also, I like those before pictures. I mean, I'm curious, I'm excited to see the after pictures in a year or two.
Me, too.
That'll be fun to see. So anyway, thank you for, you know, for all your work, and yeah, I appreciate it. That's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick. And just for the record, we also have Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith online. We have Councilwoman Erica Chambers and Councilman Bobby Wilson in, I'm sorry, Teresa Kelsmith online and Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman Wilson in chambers. Sally, how much longer or how much more do you have on your slides?
Probably a couple more minutes.
Couple more minutes and then we'll get to questions. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So just a quick overview of kind of our, our, our budget here. Now is this me or someone else with that? Okay, I think that's, okay. I do want to just point out, I, I wanted to provide a breakdown of what it looks like to move one property through this system. So we're starting out acquiring property out of the city's inventory. The land bank will pay $2,200 for a lot and 5,000 for a structure to purchase out of the city's inventory and with the costs to clear title and maintain that property up until the point of sale. The average cost we're projecting for a vacant lot is around $6,800 and for a structure, 96, up to, you know, maybe 35,000, kind of depending on the cost of stabilization. At the Pittsburgh Land Bank, we have two and a half full-time staff, but again, are supported by the expertise and staffing of the Urban Redevelopment Authority. And so currently, our staffing is covered, we just closed a Heinz grant this year and are covering additional staffing costs through our ARPA funding. Our staffing costs are covered by our, our ARPA allocation next year, but ARPA funding cannot be spent on staffing past 2024. So I do want to highlight that we have a fiscal cliff in terms of covering our staffing costs in 2025, which makes it really critical that we're able to receive an allocation this year so that we can continue our programming in, in, in the years to come. And I think another really critical piece of, of this land bank moving forward is a lot of this, a lot of the work we do is, is, is hinged on just moving that property from A to B, right? It's, it's a lot of dotting i's and crossing t's and then dotting the i a second time and crossing the t a second time. Just executing those sales documents takes up a lot of time. It's really, really important to make this process work and make it be efficient and make sure that, that other staff such as myself have time to make sure we're providing excellent customer service, that we're communicating with all of our partners and keeping up with all the other day-to-day work of the land bank. Simply having an additional position like a real estate transaction specialist to keep those sales moving forward is also really critical to the function, the future function of the land bank. And finally, I just want to end with, so we've got, we've got those staffing needs and in 2024 will also be critical to our operations to execute an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the land bank, the city of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County and the Pittsburgh Public Schools. So we're kind of rephrasing this a little bit. We, you've probably heard me say, we need to renegotiate the three taxing bodies agreement and write the land bank into that. And I've actually been advised by Solicitor Kubiak that the, probably the best approach is actually to just create our own standalone intergovernmental cooperation agreement. So our, our sister land banks to the east and whatever direction Westmoreland County's in, they've got these, these ICAs with multiple municipalities. And what they do is they, they simply solidify our quiet title powers, our ability to wipe away back taxes. But more importantly, in order for us to access the share of sale, we need an agreed upon price that the land bank is, is paying when, if we were to purchase a property from the share of sale. And this process unlocks a much more efficient process overall. We, we could shave up to a year to two years off of the, the timeline of moving that property from A to B. And if you call those, those pictures we were looking at earlier and the damage that's occurred inside of those homes from sitting for four to five to 10 years, it's so important that we can get to a point where we are being proactive in our intervention and we have an efficient process to access those homes. And then of course, the land bank also has a priority bid at the share of sale, which is different from, so the treasure sale, everything is listed for sale. It's only able to come to the land bank if no one bids on it at that treasure sale. So, so that ability to kind of protect key properties and those more efficient quiet title powers are going to be really crucial in the years to come to begin to tackle some of those existing vacant and abandoned tax delinquent properties. All right. And with that, it concludes my presentation. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. We're also joined by Councilman Daniel Lovell online. And so I usually defer to the member that's on the board. So Councilman Wilson, would you like, and Councilman Lovell both are on the board. So, but Councilman Wilson's been waiting in chambers, Councilman Lovell, so I can go to you next if you'd like. Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. So against all odds, you're sitting here against all news reports of, you know, the past times of this, this isn't working, this isn't working, this isn't working. So I'm looking at, what you're presenting here looks like something's working. Can you, can you speak to what, you mentioned the 30 properties, or how many properties did you mention that we have on the past agenda that we just preliminary approved?
Twenty-three, yeah.
Twenty-three, okay. So next year, what, maybe there was a slide, maybe I missed it, but next year, how many properties do you think you'll, you'll get to?
Yeah, that is a great question. So we are hoping to have about 100 properties in our pipeline. So they may not make it into our inventory by the end of the year because there's a delay in, so we've got to, we receive applications, review them, request concurrence from the city, then they go to the land bank board, then they go before council and then the city processes them to bring them into our inventory. So we think that we can, we can get close to 100 in that pipeline before the close of 2024.
Okay. And what about if the, if there is an intergovernmental agreement with the three taxing bodies? How many more would you be able to do?
Well.
Or were some of those in the?
Well, it, it wouldn't boost our numbers for 2024 only because it's still a year. So we may be able to begin moving, you know, I, I think, I think we'd be hitting similar numbers, but we'd be able to access that property free and clear a lot faster. So let's say if we're able to execute that agreement and start using share of sale by, maybe we submit our first properties in June of 2024, we would be able to have those coming into our inventory in June of 2025 and turn around and complete a sale. You know, and a sale might take one to three months versus if we're putting that property in the city's, requesting it be a treasure sale and it's going through a June 2024 treasure sale, there's an additional nine months after it comes into our inventory, June of 2025, because we still have to quiet the title. What we're getting out of the share of sale, the title will be quieted. So that's kind of the main, the main difference there.
The costs go down if we get that agreed upon price?
Well, yes.
Because the quiet title process right now is costing 1,500, I saw?
Yes, yes.
So that will all be wrapped up into the agreed upon price?
Yes. The, the share of sale will actually be a little more expensive. So upfront, it'll, it will cost, it will cost more. It's around 5,000 for us to, to put that property into the share of sale.
I thought you showed that the, that the, not the county, but the, the Tri-Cog has a 3,000.
Yes, right. So then the, but the, right, the difference there is that, so I could use the share of sale today, right? The land bank could tomorrow put property into the share of sale. I have to pay every dollar of back taxes. And so when we're operating in a community where we've got a house with $50,000 worth of liens and it looks like, you know, the properties we were just looking at and it's, it's worth $20,000, that is extremely cost prohibitive and it, and we can't, we just, to spend 50,000 on a property like that, I mean, that's why it's sitting. That's why it's stuck is those back taxes make it inaccessible. So it's really crucial to have that agreed upon price. Again, and that helps us with budgeting and it helps us to begin to revitalize communities because it's cost effective for the land bank to acquire.
I just got confused because you said 5,000.
It is, yes.
So where's the 5,000 coming, what's that price coming from?
And so that just covers the, the cost of the sheriff's, sheriff's sale itself, like essentially paying for the, the paper, the paperwork, the sheriff serving, the owner, the staff time of the sheriff's office.
So the Tri-Cog is paying 5,000 and then the 3,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Makes sense.
Thank you. And I, yes, I'm.
Just trying to.
Talk about it all day, every day, so. It gets a little.
It's okay. And I have to say, you know, since I, I have experienced working with you in the past and, you know, I have to say that it is great to see someone in this role that is very passionate about doing this work. You know, I remember when you worked in my office, it was, you would always talk about this, so it's really great to see you on the other side of the table, you know, getting it done. So I wanted to, so I wanted to commend you on that, but also wanted to talk about the, the future funding. Actually, let's talk about the current funding. So the current funding, if you had more, if you had more staff, like right now, like would you be able to move, like handle more properties? What, what could you do with more staff?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're, you know, we're handling, with the help of the URA transactions team, you know, we're handling the drafting and the, the oversight of, of all of the closings of the property moving out of the land bank. So we had a, you know, a minimum of one additional staffer that could handle that process. That gives our remaining staff time to do more planning, you know, just, just executing our monthly board meeting and that communication and making sure that we are as transparent and easy to use as possible.
Could you turn that number from 100 next year into 200?
Yeah, perhaps. Yes. With, but I want to be careful because we are, so we're in this in partnership with the city, right? We are, we are playing softball and the city departments that we work with that are transferring property to us have to have the ability to, to throw that ball back. And so there's, there will be other factors that can affect how, how quickly the property can move as well. And so, you know, if we, if we superstaff the land bank, but there still isn't capacity in other departments that move, move those properties, then that could, that could affect it. But, but yes, I would say with more staff, we can absolutely do more. And, you know, and I think a big lift for us next year and something that's really, really important to me is, is building out the user experience of applying to purchase from the land bank. We need to address software and make sure that we have really excellent process guides and that's going to take time and attention.
So I recently, thank you. I recently saw the legislation come through, we, we just had final vote on it on Tuesday, where the finance department sent over several properties. Why, why are we, like, we know that that process is going to take, you know, that process is going to take, could be three, four years for some of those properties. Tell me if I'm incorrect, but you know.
Yeah, with property leaving the city inventory?
Yeah. But even though we voted on it, it's not like that person gets the property.
Right.
The next day, like that starts another process, I don't know the whole deal, but from what I understand, like I was even talking with the finance director, like it could be two, three years with some of those properties.
Right. And, and I think a lot of that centers around the quiet title process.
So how long do we, once the, the, the properties we voted on, the 20 properties we voted on yesterday at standing committee for the transfer, how long would those take?
We're expecting those, we're, we're expecting nine months. Once they arrive in the land bank's inventory, nine months in order to clear the title, have a final vote, allow our, our final objection period to pass and execute a closing, we think, we think nine months and, and the quiet title process is going to be the majority of that time.
If we're talking a quarter of the time, why are we using the city's process at all anymore? Do you have any comment on that?
Well, there, I would say we, we don't have, there isn't capacity to just bring in all of that property. But ultimately, our quiet title powers are the, are the strongest when we're using the share of sale. So it's kind of like good, better, best. You've got the city's quiet title process is good, the land bank completing it when it's coming out of the city's inventory is better, but the most effective quiet title process is what we can use through MCDL via the share of sale. And so.
Okay, but I just wanted to talk about that, just that I like to, you know, see that, you know, that it'd be great to see a chart on that, just like.
We can do that.
Here's what we're.
Yes, and I think that there's still even more complexity and detail to work out there, which is, I'm, you know, I'm just, I'm so excited about this, like this pilot year that we're, we're facing here in 2024 to test those systems and, and figure out what really works best and is most effective and.
Yeah, I mean, it costs more for people. We have to, we have to sell to the highest bidder at the finance department, like through the city. And then also it's going to take an extremely longer period of time. There's a lot of things that can go wrong in that process too.
Yes.
People lose interest pretty quickly. So anyway, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Talk about that quickly and why it's important to invest in the land bank. I, I think it's critical. And so, yeah, I know I've been expressing my concerns about the funding and trying to understand how we get to a place where we're not looking at the red numbers in 2025. Because we want to do all this work and then just wish I had a good, and now like people say all these, you know, cool little things to describe something. I don't have something to describe right now, but it just seems like we're going to do all this work for nothing. And I know that's, you know, and that's not what's going to happen, you know? But we will get to next year. We will look at that and go, okay, this is critical, we have to do this. But it would be good to see it now in there for 2025.
I would agree.
Yeah.
I think a good analogy is we're running towards a cliff and will there be a bridge there when we reach the end?
I think the, the only other questions I had were, Councilperson Warwick talked about the sale to individuals, but what about the contractors that we have to stabilize properties? What, what is the, the criteria there? Like are we using URA contractors or can contractors sign up somewhere? Is that part of the user friendly interface that we're going to see?
So as of right now, based on our current funding and capacity, we are, we are implementing a pilot stabilization program and we've got two partners that are, have the capacity to handle that entire stabilization process from A to Z. They've got, the PHDC is, you know, this is what they do all day, every day. They're.
So we're using their contractors?
Yes, yes. It'll be, it'll be PHDC oversight and contractors. We're just providing the funding. And then I think a big change too is that, you know, normally this property isn't available to PHDC until the city has completed the quiet title and it's been transferred to the URA, then it's got to make its way to PHDC. And so we're going to set up a system where as soon as that property is in the land bank's inventory, we've got an agreement in place where PHDC can immediately begin stabilization work. So the surrounding residents can see an immediate improvement and hopefully we can save some costs down the road, addressing problems upfront. So, so as of right now, that's what we're going to implement based on what we've got capacity to do.
Yeah.
But hopefully in the future, we will be able to access additional types of, you know, I think, and I think ultimately bringing that in-house is going to be critical.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. So with this, I forgot to, I forgot that I actually didn't hear it, I'm switching topics here. I didn't hear a timeline for when we sell to people in the neighborhood, like other than CDCs.
Ah, like how long it will take or when do we think?
When, when do we think that'll happen?
That's a very good question. I, I hesitate to put an exact date on it at this point because it's just going to depend on, I think that we're going to see the first properties become available based on our partner capacity. What I'm expecting is, you know, we, we, you know, PHDC, whatever their number is, you know, they're looking at 10 properties, we're going to stabilize and. We're going to stabilize and evaluate those ten and maybe it turns out, you know, two of them just aren't going to fit in the pipeline this year. Maybe those become our first two that we're going to test out this, this, um, direct sales pilot. And so that's just going to, it's just going to depend.
Yeah. So I think that'll, I think the land bank has number two opportunity to, opportunity to really, uh, show the challenges of what people love just to throw out this term flippers. Uh, because sure, we want owner occupied, but we also have a lot of vacant abandoned property. And for us just to continue to use the term flipper is, I think it's just, it's poor taste because it is really challenging to get, like get the funds. And if we're talking, we're not talking about a large scale company. If there is individuals that are looking to, you know, fix up properties and sell them, it's a big undertaking to find contractors to make all that work. And we can have accountability in there with the land bank. But I just think that the land bank has a good opportunity to rewrite the story for people who do want to have a small business in fixing up properties and selling them. I lost my train of thought. So I'm done with that topic. The only other thing I wanted to say before I get off the mic was, um, you know what? I'll just, oh, I might have one more question. Uh, Ms. Chair, when we come back.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Um, Councilman Lavelle, are you still there? I can't really see the online things, um, if you'd like to.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you, do you have questions?
I don't. Councilman Wilson really went through everything. Um, in the presentation, I, I saw most of it. I had to log on to another meeting briefly. Um, but what I will simply suggest to Council, Council Wilson's concern about what I currently see on my screen, I can't see chamber, I just see the presentation, is that we should probably work to, um, put some funding into this year's budget, um, to show the continuation of the land bank staffing needs. Um, to show sort of as a bridge, we're not going to be able to, um, allocate four hundred thousand in this year's budget. But I do think we need to put a certain amount in this year's budget to be able to show the transition that will need to occur really in next year's budget for the continuation of the land bank. And so I'd be more than willing to work with you, Councilman Wilson, and I'm assuming, I can't see, but I'm assuming Peter is still there and have a conversation with our budget director about doing that.
I'm here. We can work on that.
Okay. So we'll follow, I'll follow up with you. That's it for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Strasberg, do you have any questions?
Thanks, I do. Most of my questions were covered, but thank you for being here and your great presentation and answering all of our questions. Um, I heard two numbers that I think I stored away in my memory for, um, just a short period of time before they fly out again. So, um, one was that we, um, was the sixty-six million dollar, um, property law, in property loss?
Yes, two hundred.
In property value loss. Sorry, how much was it?
Two hundred and sixty-six million.
Two hundred and sixty-six million. Okay. And that's just for the properties themselves that are like neighboring within some.
Yes, exactly.
From a vacant and abandoned property.
Exactly.
Okay. And then the other, I believe, was four point something million.
Four point eight.
Four point eight million in.
Taxes.
Taxes. Now, were those literally just the vacant abandoned properties themselves? Or does that also include the nearby properties and the loss from their property that, that value loss?
That is all nearby properties. That's the effect that the vacant property itself has on surrounding homes.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I was going to ask for that if we didn't already had that, have that because, yeah. If it was just the built, the vacant abandoned properties themselves, I would be very curious. So that's, that answers my question. So as we are continuing to look for, uh, and guard against our own fiscal cliff, I just want to those, um, perk up my ears. Those numbers perk up my ears a lot. So, yeah, I would say, um, I'm, I'm all in on investing in, as you say, the staff at the land bank, especially in the next year or so, even if, like even if it has to be sort of a temporary measure with ARPA funding. And then we figure out the next steps after that to be able to dispossess of enough, but also it sounds like our own, um, city and other departments as well to be able to throw that ball back in your lap as you need, as you need to.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I think, and I'm, I'm really glad that you've, you've come back. I mean, I think about these numbers all the time. But I also think about, you know, the thing about having an effective land recycling system is that when you hit a certain point, the problem is able to take care of itself.
Yeah.
We want to, we're, are, the goal here is not to have a depressed market or a hot market, but middle neighborhoods that are, that are hover in the middle. Um, where the property value is high enough that people are able to turn that property over. When a family member passes away, the property value is high enough that you are incentivized to probate the will, pay the inheritance tax and sell the property. And when you don't have, and, and, and make sure that the property stays maintained, that you're able to put a new roof on it. Um, if you're a senior and you want to move into a smaller home, you need enough value to be able to sell that home and move. And when the value is too low, you're losing units out of the market. And so there's just, there's so much negative impact without hitting that, getting to that, that baseline of a healthy market. But again, once we get there, you know, we may not have to address all six hundred and forty-six dead end properties. We might be able to address two hundred and then the rest are able to take care of themselves, um, because there's now, it now makes financial sense to make sure those homes um, are repurposed and don't sit vacant.
Yeah. And that brings me to my next and final point, which is just, which is not really a question, but I'll just say it, like, I really appreciate that. We have not fallen into the tendency, which I think Pittsburgh and other cities have in the past, which is to look at where we are right now and think, we will do, we will bend over backwards and do whatever is necessary to try to dispossess of or, um, you know, get, uh, you know, neighborhoods with a lot of vacant abandoned properties, like back on the tax rolls to the detriment of our future desires and wishes, right? Like, it's like turning a cold market into a hot market, but then it's too hot, right? Like, it seems like we're already putting the guardrails in place. And I know that we all at the council, like council table know that, but I wanted to state it again, like we're putting the guardrails in place so that when, you know, as you say, it kind of, the market starts to take care of itself, there's not, um, the private market taking advantage of or skewing it too wildly, too quickly before we have the opportunity to continue to maintain, you know, for the property owners to continue to maintain their livability there and stay in their own homes there or be able to continue to rent there. So, um, yeah, I just wanted to state that I think there's a lot of forward thinking, um, kind of guardrails in place that are, that I see and I think will be valuable for a lot of neighborhoods into the future. We're not there yet. It's not like, for a lot of neighborhoods, it's not a problem yet, but it, it could be in the future. So appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry, my mic's off. There you go. Thank you, Councilwoman. And we have, um, Councilwoman Smith online. Councilwoman Kell Smith?
Thank you. I just, um, would like a copy of the presentation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, thank you. And I've heard most of the questions and comments and, uh, the feedback. And I just, you know, I always have had such a, um, I guess, an angst about transferring any type of property without knowing what's happening with them. And so I'd really like a, um, update whenever you're, and I do want to say, Councilman Wilson has been great in making sure that I know, um, what's happening in, in terms of my district. So I want to thank him for that. I want to thank him and Councilman Lavelle for, for, um, serving on this, on this, uh, board. But I do, I do like, um, updates from you directly, Sally, you know, more, more often. That's all I would ask for.
Absolutely. At any time, always happy to, always happy to come over.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'll just ask a brief question. I think Councilman Wilson has one more question for a second round. So, um, I am also interested that we get the hard copy. We've been saying this for every, um, or an electronic copy of the presentation. We're trying to figure out how to attach those to the post agendas, which we, I think we have our clerk staff working on because it's, you know, more helpful to the, the public to be able to just download a PDF. Um, instead of having to watch back through the videos. I appreciate that. Similarly, have this, the report that we've got up on the screen, the Center for, is that Center for American Community Progress? I can't actually read it.
Yes, yes. Center for Community Progress.
Thank you. Um, does, do members have access to that? I think my staff just found it online, but if you've got a copy or a PDF or we can send out the link or something like that, I think that would be helpful.
I can definitely do that. It's listed on our website. Um, I have the link on, earlier on this PowerPoint as well, but I can make sure that, that we send that over to you. And if anybody wants a paper copy right now, I think I have one on me.
That's fantastic, actually. You know, my office and paper. I love paper. Um, but, um, everyone in the room is laughing. For those of you at home who can't see it. So, um, it would be interesting. I don't know if the Center for Community Progress or another partner would be interested in the, an update. But our real estate market is vastly different than 2016, right? So that 2018, I think, published report was based on 2016 real estate valuations. Um, and so we've seen some neighborhoods increase, you know, tenfold in value since 2016, but it's in pockets. So as we're looking at, you know, the, probably the total cost of the blight has already, some of it been recovered. Um, you know, I'm thinking, of course, we've had the discussion many times at the table about how quickly, um, Lawrenceville skyrocketed. So it was not that many years ago that there were vacant abandoned treasure sale properties that had been in the inventory for decades in Tenth Ward, Lawrenceville, you know, specifically. And some of those are million dollar homes now. Um, so that's a lot of tax revenue. Um, but then it's moved on. My district, um, I don't represent Garfield, but my district pretty much surrounds it almost like on three sides. And so I'm back and forth quite a bit. And similarly, um, it just, just a history flashback a little bit. Aggie Bros was such a champion of creating on the Pittsburgh Land Bank and worked for forty years in Garfield. And really worked on these issues of like creating homeownership, creating wealth building, doing the kind of financial training, mortgage training, making sure Garfield residents got to buy Garfield homes. And today, and there was just so much, so much literally vacant land, just hundreds and hundreds of parcels in that one neighborhood. And now there is so much construction, private sector construction. It's, and the home prices there have probably gone up at least fivefold, I would say, in the last five years. So, um, we have already seen those pockets. And so I think it would be really informative for council, for the planning department, when we're talking about comprehensive planning, when we're looking at where we need to do wealth building, to really look at where, where is the light today? Um, because it's not necessarily in the same places that it was in 2016.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point. Um, and so, and a few things there, uh, so I think, you know, highlighting again, what, how it is, it is so great to be an affiliate of the U R A is that the U R A has a tool called Ptolemy Building Blocks. And, uh, if you ever want to sit down and go over the, it is mapped out data. So they've got the, um, the, uh, mark, the most recent, um, market value analysis, um, in there. And, you know, just, it's so easy to just click through. And that's where most of the numbers came from that I showed earlier. So we, so we've got some tools. Uh, it's, it's exciting to have that data at our fingertips. And really a lot of it, a lot of the data is coming through P L I. It's, it's there. And, you know, the, the ten years of work at the Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspections to, to really clean up and, and prove their uh, data management, we, it's there. Like, we, we know where most of this, this property is. And, and really just need to build more coordination and systems around what happens once, once P L I, um, marks it as, as a dead end property. Uh, but yeah, I, I, I think that's, that is important to point out here that, um, the city has changed a lot. Um, and really the approach in every neighborhood is, is going to be a little bit different. The, what, how to approach Lormer is not the same way as how to approach Knoxville.
Right. They, they're different communities with different desires and aspirations. Um, I think I was getting a message from Councilwoman Smith, but I think that maybe her question has been answered. So I'll pause myself and go back to Councilman Wilson if you've got a follow-up, I think.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, uh, I have a question, but before I get there, I have a point to make about the data that we're talking about. A lot of good points probably about it. One data point that's missing is that, sure, the property, someone will pay the property taxes, right? We sell it, they fix it up, or the CDC fixes it up with a contractor. Uh, but there's a person there and there, or two or three, or it could be a family or two adults. So they're working age, we would get a wage tax from that as well. Is there a way to do that? Proxy calculation? At all? All those nifty tools you have over.
I can certainly find out.
We're, we're just like dealing with our paper over here.
I can certainly find out. If, if Oscar is watching, I will, I will, uh, I will follow up and.
Yeah, what was that program called? Building Blocks?
Uh, yeah, Building Block, Blocks. It's, um, Ptolemy is the tool. And, um, I know the Tri-Cock Land Bank has actually switched over to Ptolemy to, um, display their inventory and manage their sales as well. So they're really, they're a great comprehensive tool for, on many fronts.
Yeah, I'm sure that could be estimated somehow, you know, how much we could get from weight, increase in wage tax as well. Okay, uh, the question I have is, uh, was the U R A, was the land bank, um, uh, asked to give any input or criteria around the ned allocations?
Oh, what a, what an interesting question. Um, uh, no, no. I mean, not formally, um, but no.
So can you explain? Do you see that, do you see that there's a link there?
Yes. Oh, my goodness. Yes.
Can you explain the link?
Yeah, um.
Cause I see it, but I'm just curious to know what.
Yes, thank you. So this is a, a, a program that I, I had previously had the opportunity to participate in. It's called the Neighborhood Economic Development Grant. And that is largely how many community development corporations in the city, uh, cover staff funding. And it's one of the only sustainable, sustaining sources of staff funding available to CDCs. And as you've noticed in a previous slide, CDCs are also a major user of the property reserve. And they play a big role in helping to guide, uh, economic development in their communities. And so it's also crucial that they've got funding to be able to sustain staff and consistency. Um, and I think that's been some of the challenges over the years with the property reserve is that, you know, as a nonprofit and you're, you know, sometimes you're, you're receiving the funding to keep your staff, but there's turnover, you lose staff. And that affects how quickly property is then able to move out of the property reserve is the capacity of the CDCs. So.
So this can't be a new, it's not, it's not a new concept for, you know, there to be someone at the other end at the CDC to be work, already, you know, be there to organize from, from that point, you know?
Right.
On the, the construction, the disposition on their end.
Right, decades.
So, so if, so, so I see a path, I see, I see the link. I'm interested to, to work with the administration on and, and the land bank and see how there could be, I'm not sure what they're, you know, there's, they're scoring.
Right.
Like there should be a scoring line.
Right.
On how it's, how it's, uh, you know, how the land bank is identifying properties. Well, just, you know, so the land bank identifies properties, just that there's a scoring line. I'm like, okay, here are the neighborhood groups that, you know, will be great to keep them funded. But also, are there tools out there? I see, you know, Community Progress. There are tools out there or other organizations that provide, um, training or, or something to CDCs if they don't get the funding, you know, and how to keep, uh, keep, keep, um, yeah, cause these are, these are boards, volunteers that come together to say, okay, we want to fix up vacant abandoned property in our neighborhood. And I, and if they haven't already figured out how to, how to raise funds to do that, they're looking for the city to, you know, get the ned funding. So I, I know we can't, we can't fund everything through five hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
And so is there, you know, a class or a training? I know this is not the land bank's.
Well.
It might not be the land bank's wheelhouse, but maybe the U R A has something su- somewhere.
Yeah.
I'd like to be able to offer some, you know, some, uh, some advice to, cause I don't know. I'd like to offer some advice to CDCs on, on how they can, maybe it's, yeah, right. The revenue they get from selling the property and then, I don't know, there, there could be some business strategy that they should understand or, you know, be on board with.
Right, right. Yes. And so, and I think that as important as it is to have, make sure that our CDCs are funded and are able to, to meet us um, and walk with us down this, this path of recycling property. Um, I mean, I can also say from personal experience of, of being the own, my own co-chair of my housing working group in my community is that it is an incredible amount of work. is that it is an incredible amount of work to be a volunteer resident.
Yes.
Learning how these systems work. Um, I, I just, I don't think that it is a normal and reasonable ask for your average resident to, to have to become such an expert for these systems to move and work in their communities, and so I think the CDC support is important. But I think that the other way that we also address that is we make sure that we have the programming and support uh, at the land bank to be doing that work, um, regardless of, uh, the capacity of a, of a particular uh, CDC or community organization. If there is work to be done in that community, we should be able to have that capacity.
So you think that staff could be in-house? Like, you think the land bank could be built where there is in-house staff members that, you know, the ones that are working directly with CDCs as they're, uh, you know, doing work that their staff could do? Can you explain?
Yeah, just that, that there should be, there should be capacity at the city to do that baseline level of responsible recycling of vacant and abandoned property. And right now, if it's, if the, you know, for the, I mean, really for the last decades, right, the, the, the active CDC has to be the catalyst to push property through the treasure sale. And so if you haven't had that CDC over the last thirty years requesting property, um, and, you know, I think uh, if you look at the tax delinquency map of, let's say, Knoxville and Hazelwood, really illustrates Knoxville has so much vacant and abandoned property. Um, we use yellow dots to indicate, uh, vacant houses. I mean, it is just covered, uh, in yellow dots. But you look at Hazelwood, where there has been consistent, uh, requests for property to go through the treasure sale, there's not a whole lot of vacant and abandoned tax delinquent property left, it's city inventory. And so that's really, to me, where you see, where I see inequity, is when there isn't that capacity to just the data is telling us that there is vacant property here that needs to be addressed, and therefore we should have programming to respond to it. Um, you know, that, that's where you can see that, that inequity grow.
Yeah.
And, and why the, the, I think both approaches are necessary and important.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair.
I love that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Um, I'll say, I don't think there are any members with any more questions, so, um, Ms. Stenma, do you have any other kind of final thoughts before we motion to recess?
Well, I could talk about vacant and abandoned property all day, but I do have a board meeting at one o'clock, so, maybe I'll conclude my, my comments, and I really appreciate, um, uh, council making the time for, for the Pittsburgh Land Bank to come and, and present and talk about our successes this year.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's been a really big year. Um, then I'm not even gonna ask for a motion, I'm just gonna call this meeting in recess.